Old business.
Oh, vote.
We have to vote.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Alright, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All in favor say no. Then it's approved. Old business, there is none.
Correct.
New business, we've got some new members to welcome.
Yes, member, yes. Kathy Kim is replacing Claude Whedower who moved two blocks out of town. He just wanted off the board.
Did he do that on purpose?
Yes, he did, he just wanted out.
And it was like ten years ago at Fowl Lady.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But yeah, Kathy's been on our BZA for a while now and she is, has been a practicing planner. For a number of years and so it's great to have someone with some planning background and knowledge to add to the expertise. Upon the dice, so welcome Kathy.
Thanks Julie.
You're welcome, if you met everyone.
I'm Sherry, Sherry Hanson.
Nice to meet you. Kathy Kim.
Yeah, I've heard a lot about you. Okay.
Oh good.
I'll tell you the other stuff on the side.
Sherry's also on our historic preservation.
Oh, okay. Well, you know my house that we're just getting ready to sell this week. The old Scottview.
I don't know it.
Oh, you don't know Scottview? What used to be the Scottview Restaurant?
Yes, are you, it's, oh yeah.
It's going on the market on Thursday.
Well, I will have to figure it out then, okay.
That's a great.
Yes, I'm staying in town. Just barely Julie, just barely, I'm not far from the city limits.
So, Julie, election of officers?
Yep, so since Claude left, he'd been the chairman. And Joe has stepped in to be interim chairman, so we need to do new election. Chairman and vice chair.
I would nominate Joe for chair.
Yeah.
A second.
Yeah, let's keep status quo.
Again, I've only been the chair tonight, so I've been the vice chair. I've been a vice chair up until now.
That's why, that's why I nominated you.
Alright, I appreciate it, I do want to let the staff know that I have accepted a position with National VA Office.
Heard you.
And I do not know exactly what that looks like for weekly travel.
Okay.
But there will be.
Yeah.
So I just, I need to lay that out there.
See how that goes.
Goes.
Yeah.
But I, I thank you for your nomination.
Understood.
Alright, which means it could be short-lived if I.
If that ends up being quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah.
And what about vice chair, folks?
Vote.
We have to vote for you first.
Hey, weren't they talking yet?
She's, she's sinking Chinese.
Alright, alright, so. Alright, I won't decline that, so there's a second?
Yeah. We second.
So then whoever is vice chair just should keep that in mind that they may be. Taking chairperson duties more often than not for.
Well, I mean, let's open it up to discussion, right? I mean, does anybody want to be vice chair? I, I travel way too much for me to even consider it, that's why I've always just kind of stepped where I'm at. This is all I can handle anymore. Anybody else, Kathy?
Hmm, this is my first night.
Third newbie under the bus.
Not right, not this time, I don't think I'd write them up.
I'd, I'd do it if I got somebody like Joe to teach me, say, I feel good.
We would do our best. Alright, so let's go with the chair first, okay? We had a motion, so second to the motion.
I second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have. Alright, um, vice chair. Somebody said they would volunteer, is there a motion for vice chair?
I'll, I'll move to make Mr. Holman vice chair.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
All in favor of vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Chair is.
Thank you gentlemen.
Voting either way, but that's okay.
Right, and the third item with new business is to conduct a public hearing for case number two zero two two dash one eight. T X T for proposed test amendments to the adopted two thousand sixteen development regulations. We'll say again, this was set down on the ninth, I hope everyone had a chance to review that over the weekend, took a look at it. I read through it, it's hard on cellphone, but done.
Yes.
And I believe I heard others have done the same, so, uh, staff.
Okay, um, so for those who've been on the board for a little bit, this is our annual update of development regulations. The development regulations were thoroughly updated and adopted in two thousand sixteen and so annually we go through those. And just make some minor modifications based on our use throughout the year. Um, there's, there's always things that come up that maybe don't quite jive or don't read the way we want them to or just some. Changes that we feel like need to be made, um, just things that kind of come up throughout the course of use, so that's what this is. I will just go through each of these changes, um, sort of page by page if you want to follow along. So, um, so just kind of getting to copy the development regulations that you have. If you have any questions or comments as we're going through.
We're just, we're basically looking at the red lines, right?
Yep, the red line, yep, that's all we're changing. So, uh, first change, it's in Article Two, Applications and Procedures. Adding a provision that for administrative flats, those are lots, flats and lot combinations that we do administratively. They do not come to the planning commission, um, those are just simple in nature that we do, um, at the staff level. Adding provision that any property, um, may, may not have been previously. Um, included in administrative plat, we've had a few come through lately where, um. Property owners have tried to split a property multiple times and once you've done that. The legal description gets all out of whack and just all sorts of things, uh, just really need to be cleaned up, so just adding that provision that a property can only be. Um, gone through administrative plat once, then would have to go through a plat process coming through the planning commission. So next is, um, let's see. Just clearing up the language on what happens with dedication of land for public purposes with the final plat. Um, the way that was worded was just a little unclear, so just clarifying, um, that the city commission shall approve or disapprove. Dedication of land for public purposes within thirty days following the action of the planning commission. Um, that was a little wordy, uh, the way it was in there before, it didn't quite make sense. Uh, the next is just, um, adding the provision, uh, final plats should be recorded with the register of deeds within eighteen months following. Approval by the planning commission or city commission approval of land dedic- for dedication of public purposes if required. Um, again, just kind of clearing up some language, not all final plats have to go to the planning commission, so just, uh, clean that up a little bit. And then the next one in this section, um, with the disposition of final plats. That's what happens to final plats, um, after they've been recorded, just changing that to reflect actual practices, um. And here it was, you know, stating that we needed a couple copies, a couple Mylar copies, nobody does Mylar copies of anything anymore, so just. Kind of clearing up what we actually need to get back to staff once those are recorded. Uh, the next is in chapter four, Article Four, the zoning of district standards. Um, for the residential mixed-use district, uh, removing the provision that there shall only be one principal structure per lot. In this district, we're taking that out, um, based on the intent of that zoning district. As stated, the intent of the zoning district is to provide for high-density multifamily residential dwellings. Along with a mix of appropriate neighborhood-serving, commercial, civic, and other uses. That provision, um, for only one principal structure per lot is really a single-family type provision. And all multifamily and commercial districts that we have outlined already allow for more than one principal structure per lot. So that makes sense for this district, since, since that's really the intent of the district is to provide those types of uses. And not to limit it to just one building per lot, um, when more than one may be appropriate in a certain situation. Uh, the next is for agricultural buildings, um, agriculture buildings. That's a specific accessory use that we added a couple of years ago, we were finding that on the larger lots in town, um. They were a lot of times needing, um, those accessory buildings larger than what our regulations allowed for a storage building. Um, if you've got quite a bit of land, if you've got acreage, you might need some more equipment to take care of that, you're needing a larger building. You might have horses that you need, you know, a barn, storage, that type of thing. So right, um, as it stands, we have a requirement that, um, accessory buildings have to be smaller than the square footage. Of the house that's on the property. Um, with the addition of these, the provision for the agricultural buildings. In some cases, those agricultural buildings, as we allow them, they may be bigger than the house that's on the property. Um, a lot of these larger lots, the acreage, they might have a rather small house, um, and need or want a larger accessory building. And so just adding that provision in there that that may be allowed, um, we already limit how big those agricultural buildings can be based on the acreage of the lot. But just sort of adding that flexibility that they can be potentially bigger than the house that's on the property.
Was there a reason that that was in there in the first place? Like, what is the benefit of limiting it to? Only one structure, or the size of the structure?
So the regulations, um, you know, most lots in town are not these large acreage-type lots. And so if you've got sort of your standard quarter-acre lot, um. You're not going to want a shed or detached garage sitting in that backyard that's larger than the house. Um, if somebody wants that, they have the ability to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a variance, and we have had a couple do that. But really that intent is so that you're not having. On a standard-sized lot, this monstrous outbuilding in the backyard.
Julie, elsewhere in your definitions, does it define what an agricultural building is?
It does. And do you have a copy of the?
Not yet.
Okay, I'll make sure you get that, but.
Thank you.
Let me just.
I think it's on page twelve.
Yes, so the, the actual definition that we added, um, is a detached accessory structure. Used for the shelter of livestock, the storage of agricultural products. Or the storage and maintenance of equipment or supplies used for agricultural or property maintenance activities. And this current size allowance for that. Um, so in this chapter four, the zoning districts and standards, um, it's not on a page that I gave you in your packet. But for agricultural buildings, it states that in residential districts. An agricultural accessory building not exceeding two percent of the total square footage of the lot on which it is located. On parcels two acres or larger, up to a maximum of thirty-four hundred square feet. So some lots, and I, I want to say that's like a four or five acre lot that allows that thirty-four hundred square foot maximum. So thirty-four hundred square feet is pretty large, and so if you aren't a lot big enough to allow that, your house may not be thirty-four hundred square feet. That's pretty big even for a house, but for a barn or storage, that's still going to potentially be a reasonable size.
I mean, that's two acres or about?
Yes, in order to qualify for that provision of having an agricultural building. Any more questions on that one? Nope, okay, moving along. Um, the next is we have a restriction that no more than two detached accessory structures are allowed per building, lot, or parcel, whichever is larger in area. Just clarifying what, um, detached accessory structure means, um, there's a whole bunch of things that could be an accessory structure. Flagpoles, burn baths, and anything can, you know, a swing set, so just kind of, um, clarifying that we're meaning. A detached garage or a storage building or a gazebo, um, so we're not having those questions come up. You know, hey, is my pool an accessory structure? So just clarifying on that. Uh, the next is for home occupations, we do allow home occupations to have a sign on their property. Um, and the restriction in this chapter limited it to a half-square-foot sign, which is about postage stamp size. Um, and in our sign chapter, we had set that at three square feet, so this, this was just getting in line with what we had put in our. Um, sign chapter. And then the next, um, this is probably the biggest change that we have in here, adding a section for the provision of tiny homes. Um, we've just been getting a number of requests for tiny homes and we just didn't have a way to define that. Um, every, everyone defines a little bit differently, so I took a look at some other jurisdictions in. Kind of in the region that have those provisions and I tried to get sort of the simplest, um, you know, workable. Definition, um, that we can have in here, and so the way I wrote it in here, um. You can, I'm sure you've had a chance to read it, but basically tiny homes, as defined herein, and I added a definition in the back. Uh, may be utilized as the primary dwelling structure on any residentially zoned lot. Tiny homes must follow all development standards of the zoning district in which they're located, so that's going to be setbacks. Um, pipe, you know, all of that type of thing. Um, second, tiny homes must be placed on a permanent foundation and must be connected to a public sewer and water system. Tiny homes must comply with all applicable building codes. Um, some other cities I'd looked at got real specific with which building codes they needed to comply with. We try not to do that in the development regulations on purpose, um, so that if this changes. We don't have to change building codes or vice versa, so we just refer back to, you've got to comply with the building codes. There are building codes specifically addressing tiny homes. Um, some cities will allow tiny homes to be on wheels, um, so some of those are going to be movable. Um, and just looking at that and sort of the feeling we had got, um, I think there was some concern that people might try to use. Uh, you know, mobile homes or trailers, just something a little bit more, um, temporary than what we'd like to see. Um, that's certainly up for discussion if you feel like that might be something to look at allowing the, the movable ones.
The, uh, that second item, uh, on a, placed on a permanent foundation. Does that mean I, I pour a slab and then I, I can put my house on there that's a permanent foundation? And then put it on wheels and take it somewhere else?
So that's really going to be a foundation that's going to be addressed with a building code.
Okay, so that will be attached.
Yeah, so it doesn't necessarily, I don't think, have to be a slab, but it's got to be on some sort of foundation, whether those are. Piers or blocks or whatever the building codes for that size of structure allow. Um, and then.
Um, one thing I want to add is, um, I actually looked at some property at Lake Ladawanna and I was going to put a tiny house on it. And you, you might look at their, um, their structure because they have a certain size that you have to, for the, it's, I think it's nine hundred for. It, uh, no wait, it's twelve hundred if you just do one layer, but if you do two, it can be nine hundred. And, um, you don't have to hook up your water, none of that, you just.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's why I was kind of shocked to see that in there, but, um, you do have to have some kind of slab.
Yeah.
But Lake Ladawanna, I, I know it's a different kind of situation, but they did add provisions in theirs.
Yeah.
This seems to be like the park models that they have in places in Arizona.
Yes.
Where they're permanent.
Yeah, so in looking, um, so Shawnee County, uh, Topeka, um, Kansas City, Missouri, both have. Gone through a fairly extensive process, uh, pretty recently with their tiny homes. Um, and then we'll get to it, but the definition that I added in our definition chapter for tiny home. Um, is a home between two hundred and four hundred square feet. That is site-built or partially site-built, that is set up and secured on a permanent foundation. With any means of transport, transporting the unit, including wheels, suspension, axle components, or trailer being removed. Tiny homes do not include recreational vehicles, mobile homes, shipping containers, train cars, or any other similar structure or equipment. So that's really trying to get at.
You can't bring in a shipping container and put it in your.
No. It can be prefab and brought in, or you can build it here, but it cannot be.
Modular home on, on a slab.
Yep, so we allow modular homes, that's, you know.
Brian, you're going to have to get rid of your caboose that you got on your slab out there, I'm sorry.
I'll get to it. What, so what about, uh, because I know in Kansas City they have, um, tiny home communities. Would this, would this cover something like that, or would that be a completely different zone? Do, do you know?
Yep, so that could, um, so the multifamily zoning district, I, that had been a question too, so. All of the single-family zoning districts, again, they only allow one principal structure per lot. Multifamilies, the multifamily zoning district does not limit the number of structures that are on a lot. Um, it doesn't require that each structure house multiple families, but it allows multiple residential, um, structures per lot. So, my, the, sort of the thought was that if you wanted to have a tiny home community, you could look at that multifamily zoning. Um, because you're going to be housing multiple families, so you would, you're just, your separate units would be, could be tiny homes. Instead of apartment buildings.
Would that be an RMF?
Uh, RMF.
RMF?
Yep.
Yeah. And there wouldn't be a limit to how many structures they could put if, if they were zoned for that?
Yep, so, um, the way we have RMF, um, stated in here. This district is intended to provide for development of multiple family residential developments and allows a high population density. The district is residential in character and promotes a high-quality environment through aesthetically-oriented property development standards. This district is appropriate for many areas of the community and shall be located in accordance with the criteria established in the Leavenworth Comprehensive Land Use Plan. These districts need not be contiguous with other multifamily districts, so. Again, that doesn't limit how many, uh, buildings or units you could have. And again, it doesn't require that they be, that the units themselves be multifamily, just that on one lot, you're going to have multiple. Units. So those tiny home, a tiny home community would be allowed in the RMF zoning district.
Okay.
I know there's been a little bit of talk about, um, potential places to have that, um. I know in Kansas City, there's, I think they have more than one now, but more oriented towards veterans.
Right.
Um, and with the VA being up here, I know there's been, um, just kind of some talk over the years of potential locations that that might be. Appropriate.
A lot of talk, is no one willing to, to fund up for it?
Yes.
And, and finding the appropriate place, and third. Do the demographics meet the need?
Right.
Leavenworth County, and right now all of ours show no.
Yeah, so that'd be a different discussion, but the intent is to have the regulation in place, should that. Ever come to fruition, so. So that's how we kind of worded that, um, again, if you have any comments or.
One more question, I'm sorry.
No, absolutely.
Uh, an accessory dwelling unit, um, what, how is that defined?
Um, let me see, so that is one we actually added in last year, basically. Um, while I'm getting to it in here, an accessory dwelling unit is, um, sort of like a mother-in-law quarters. Um, so a, a second, uh, dwelling on your property.
Yeah, like a carriage house too?
Yep, like a carriage house. And. Let me find where that went. There, there, yep, so we added that, again, I think we did this last year. Um, so accessory dwelling units or ADUs, um, they can be approved by special use permit in any residential zoning district. Um, subject to a few regulations, um, have, have to be compatible with the design of the principal dwelling unit. Um, they can't have a separate driveway entrance from the streets, um, have to be smaller than nine hundred square feet. Um, either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling has to be occupied by the owner of the property.
Okay.
Um, so, so yeah, we've got that.
I'm satisfied.
Yeah, no, absolutely, ask, ask away. And we do have a number of those already existing in town, um, and we were getting requests for more. Um, a lot of properties that have, you know, maybe a carriage house, a really nice outbuilding. Um, that might be appropriate for it, and the way the regulations were before, we didn't allow that, so that's why we added that in last year to allow that. Um, and we had it be by special use permit, um, again, so that would come to the planning commission. They may not be appropriate in every situation, um, but just sort of, we have that level of review that any of those requests would come to this board.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, then moving on, um, Article Five, the access and parking. Um, in terms of the, uh, parking materials, just getting that in line with our public works standards. What we had in here was a little bit less than what public works requires, so just getting that lined up. And then, um, oh, gravel parking pad. We allow gravel parking pads in the rear yard, um, accessed off of an alley. Um, that's the only type of gravel parking that we allow in town. And so the intent of that is to truly just have a parking pad that you can pull in off of the alley. Um, and then back, back out. We were getting a lot of folks who were basically wanting to gravel their whole backyard and consider that a parking pad accessed off of the alley. So the, the intent with this was to just define that, so. Um, we weren't having to kind of do it on the fly with every request that we got, so. Just set that at a maximum depth of thirty-seven feet, as measured from the rear property line, that's plenty of room to get your car in. Doesn't limit the width of it, um, just the depth, um, some people were wanting to kind of pave a gravel driveway up to the front of the house. And so, um, just again, so we can define that and not have it be so loosey-goosey and be consistent. And then, one more in this chapter. Um, and if you, I think most of you were on a few months ago when we had the discussion about the Seven Brew Coffee. Um, out, um, for the couple of you that weren't here, um, Seven Brew Coffee. Um, kind of a small coffee joint, kind of like a Scooters that was wanting to go in on that really small parcel with the billboard out in front of Home Depot. Um, and site plans are not something that Planning Commission generally sees. We've got a, a staff-level review committee that takes care of those. Um, our staff-level review committee had denied their site plan based on access spacing there along Fourth Street. It was going to be just sort of a million driveways with no space between them. Um, and so they appealed to that decision, appeal of a DRC decision comes to the Planning Commission, then ultimately the City Commission. Um, and so there was some argument about the spacing and how the city defined it versus what they defined it. Um, our Public Works Department was measuring the, the spacing as stand-up curb, which is. Sort of a straightaway of curb, not the radius of a curb. And so just added that in here, um, for all of the space requirements, that it be, um, whatever that spacing be, um, that it's stand-up curb. Um, so it didn't change anything, just sort of clarified that, so there wasn't that point of, um, contention in working with.
Would, would that have kept up with me getting back to the Planning Commission for?
Um, no, they, they, DRC would have denied it, um, and they would have still appealed. Um, and so it still would have come to Planning Commission, um, but that, that was just a point of argument that kind of carried through to the City Commission that ultimately denied it. Um, and they just, you know, were sort of making that argument all the way through that they felt like they had a certain spacing, they were measuring from. Center point of driveways, and so just sort of clarifying what we as the city mean when we say.
And this, and their biggest, their, the big thing is they had to get, uh, K dot permission for that curb cut. And also federal highway, because that's a federal highway, US.
Yeah, there were a lot of things going on with that.
Just try to Topeka, check that one out, you'll know exactly what it'll look like.
Yes. Okay, moving on to Article Eight, the signage. Uh, the first one, there was just a little bit of funny wording in the, um. Size allowed for, um, the faces of detached signs in commercial districts, so just clarify that a little bit. Um, then with temporary signs, uh, we had, the way that's worded, um, said no parcel shall display temporary sign for more than a hundred and twenty days. Or no parcel shall have more than one temporary sign. Um, a lot of commercial parcels have more than one business, and so really the intent of that is for each business to be allowed temporary signage. Um, so we're not limiting it to, if another business on your lot has a sign, we're not excluding you, so just clarifying that. And then, um, also he, here in regard to temporary signs, add a requirement that. Any inflatable temporary sign shall be set back a distance from the curb at least equal to the fully inflated height of the sign. This sort of came about those dancing windswept things. Um, people like to set them really close to the curb and if they're not fully inflated all time, they are flapping out into the streets. And so just trying to keep that from happening, um, if you've got an eight-foot tall dancing windswept, it needs to be at least eight foot back, so it's not.
Falling on your building, they can't fall in the street.
Yes, we don't want it falling in the street.
That's good.
Okay, and then moving on, Article Eleven, Board of Zoning Appeals. There is a requirement there that one member shall be a member of the Planning Commission, we took that out, unless one of you wants to volunteer. Um, but that is not a statutory requirement, so we just felt like, um, there is no need to restrict ourselves to that. Yeah, it's, yes.
It's filled at the moment.
Yes, so it, it's always nice to have, um, but we didn't want to sort of box ourselves into needing to do that. Yes, so it it's always nice to have, um but we didn't wanna sort of box ourselves into needing to do that, since it's not a statutory requirement. And then, um just at the end with how to appeal the board decision, just reworded that a little bit. Um and I I just took the language straight from the Kansas statute. Um the way we had it worded was just not quite in line with statute, so just um replace that with the direct language from Kansas statute. Um so that we're good on that. Okay, and then getting into the definitions article. We have three separate definitions of bed and breakfast, and they were all just slightly different and never seemed to fit a. Particular bed and breakfast proposal, so um we wanted to simplify that and just have one bed and breakfast definition. So we weren't trying to figure out which kind of bed and breakfast are you? Um so took out the bed and breakfast guest house and the bed and breakfast homestay. Um and just have a bed and breakfast in, and tried to revise that definition, just so it kinda catches all. Bed and breakfast uses. Then, uh we had the um. The the phrase, community playfields, playgrounds, and parks in here, um but it just never had an actual definition with it. So, um just added that, um and just again, looked at what some other um cities have as that type of definition. And set that as any park or recreation facility accessible by all members of the public and intended to serve the recreation needs of the community at whole. Just kinda kept that pretty generic, but needed to get a definition in there for it. And then residential homestay, um this is what we have been using for requests. For like an Airbnb short-term rental. And what we're finding is the way that this was worded just really didn't fit. With what most Airbnbs or short-term rentals function as, so wanted to make that um. More inclusive and more accurately representative of the types of requests that we see, so just changed it just a little bit. Um. So any furnished residential structure wherein one limited turn border, um not to exceed a hundred and eighty days, is allowed the use of an entire structure. Or a portion of a structure and its grounds. Took out the requirement for housekeeping services provided at least weekly. Um typically, Airbnbs don't provide housekeeping services, they clean it after you're gone. Um during your stay, you're responsible for cleaning it yourself. And then, no management or or owner presence is required and no meals are provided. Um and just kinda kept the rest the same, so just those few little tweaks got it more in line with the types of requests that we're seeing. And I think we actually have a special use permit request for one that's coming up next month. Um and we had had them hold off on submitting that, we told them that we were planning on updating this definition. Um and this one in particular, I think they were only wanting to use a portion of the property, I think it's a duplex or a triplex or something. Uh but they were not wanting to use the whole thing for a short-term rental, and so again, this is really just intended to get in line with the types of requests. That we've been seeing. And then the last addition, um tiny home, I I already read that to you, the definition, um so just got that back here in the definition section. And then finally, the use table, just a couple of changes on here. Uh the first was um domestic violence shelters. Uh they were previously not listed as being allowed in multifamily residential, um mobile home park. Or RMX, the residential mixed use, um but allowed in every other district. And again, just taking a look at other cities and where they allow their shelters, um that should really be a use that's allowed in any, any district. And then, just taking out the bed and breakfast guest house and bed and breakfast homestay, since we um removed those definitions. To consolidate the bed and breakfast use into one.
So that shelter and the domestic violence, is that just that type of shelter?
Um, yeah, and so that's something that we need to look at going forward to, um. So for instance, with the homeless shelter, um so the way the use table is worded, there's some provisions at the beginning of it. Um that basically state if your specific use is not listed, then it's up to the discretion of the planning director. To figure out which use is most like your use. And so, for instance, with the the homeless shelter up here in northeast part of town. Um we used that, uh the domestic violence shelter um as the closest use that's in the table. For allowing that where they went.
Any further discussion question?
I have one question, I I was just curious with with that definition of tiny homes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Tiny homes.
Um so between two hundred and four hundred square feet i- is how it's defined. I just pulled up Home Depot to look at at there, so if they have one that's four hundred and ten square feet. So would that, that wouldn't apply for a tiny home anymore, that would have to be a residential home?
Yeah, so then that would apply, and that's, um the two hundred to four hundred is, was kinda pulled from, uh I think Shawnee County's. So I mean, that's, you know, again, for discussion, um. You know, if you think it should go up to like six hundred square feet, I mean, that's still pretty darn small, um.
Or if there's a standard template for a four hundred and ten foot home, that's already out there that one could purchase, then what's the difference?
Right, yeah, and that's why I looked up the the manufacturer, you know, what you would get here in our community.
Yeah, and we, um there is a provision in the development regulations, um called a, what is it, minor modification? That I as staff can approve up to a ten percent. Variance on regulations without it needing to go through an appeal process.
You could go four hundred and forty.
Yeah, so they could go up to four hundred and forty without needing to get a variance. And then again, if someone's wanting to go outside of that, there's always the variance process. Um so what we try to write the regulations for is that, you know, the bell curve, we're getting the bulk of it, and there's always gonna be a few outliers, which we know. And that's what the variance process.
And the demographics of the area, definitely, cause there's a huge difference between the tiny house that I was looking at. They wanna keep it in tune with the lake property, as opposed to just a tiny house here.
Twelve hundred is a tiny home there, that's what I heard you say?
The first floor has to be twelve hundred, if you have a two-story, it can be nine hundred.
All right, most homes.
Are smaller than twelve.
We're talking lake property here, that's the difference.
Yeah, understood, all right.
Yeah.
Anything further? All right, the actions we have in front of us are recommend approval or denial of the proposed tax amendments for the final action, go to the city commission. Motion?
I move to approve it.
Okay, second.
I'll second, I'm sorry, Kim second.
So there's a second, all in favor of recommending approval, say yep.
Yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? No.
Great, that will go to city commission at. I believe it's the fourth Tuesday of this month, it's not going tomorrow, so.
Thank you for that, there's nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.
Yep.
Great time.
All right.